We have a crowd, we hate to keep waiting. Okay, we are gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, November 7th, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Minutes and reports received and filed?
Yes, the reporters, the county clerk, and the auditor.
Okay. Commissioner, committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
We got a Campo stakeholder meeting tomorrow, Tuesday, or today from 1:00 to 2:00. HBA board meeting this afternoon. Capital Area Rail Terminal Coffee, Coffee and Cart tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM at Capital Bluffs. I guess that's just if you wanna learn something about it or hear what's going on. Okay, thank you, Eric. So, I got a solid waste management district board meeting tomorrow. HBA general membership meeting tomorrow night. Thursday, got a Jefferson City Regional Economic Planning meeting. Friday's Veterans Day, holiday anyway. I guess Saturday's actually Veterans Day. Football Friday, we got Capital City and Elias playing each other. Jeff City's playing, Blair Oaks playing. We got a lot of action going on. And then Saturday's deer season, so good luck and be safe.
We have ambulances at all of those, yeah. Job security.
Somebody is, I know Elias will need one, Blair Oaks need one. I don't know if Jeff City's.
I don't think Jeff City's at home, though.
Okay.
I don't remember for sure, but.
Today, there's a U.S. Department of Agriculture listening session, and I think I may have sent something to Toby and/or Eric about this grant opportunities. Wednesday is Scooters Coffee for Toys.
Twenty percent off. Purchases go to Toys for Tots.
Thursday is Public Works City meeting, right, Eric? Thursday evening's Bugle Boy out at St. Martin's. Monday, we have an ARPA meeting. And U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and Missouri Department of Revenue have a meeting on the JCL-142, which I guess is the Levy River Study. And also, let's see, Thursday, Judge Walker has a Cole County Justice System event in the afternoon. That's what I have.
Okay. Well, it's 28, no, it's 48 days to Christmas now, according to my calendar. Tonight, I've got a meeting at IC Church, because I've sinned a lot lately, so they're gonna have a special meeting. Wednesday, Central Workforce Development. And I'm supposed to be over at MU with the NROTC in the afternoon. Scooters, Operation Bugle Boy, waving if you got them at 3:45. Saturday, I am going to the MU Tennessee game. And then Monday, I have a USS Missouri Commissioning Committee meeting. So that is all I have. Presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests. The Capital Area Rail Terminal Kart Update.
So, we're kinda making the rounds and going through just an update of where we are at on cart and then talk a little bit about the event tomorrow. So I'll let Paul kick it off right now.
So, thanks for having us. As you guys know, the formerly known as the Cole County Multimodal Facility has been rebranded as the Capital Area Rail Terminal, or CART for short. The project was initially, kind of kickoff for it was in November of 2021. We were able to put some grant applications together in the spring of '22. We were awarded grants in the summer of '22. Moved into design and bidding in February of this year. And Don Schneider's excavation, the contractor, started to work on May 1st. So we're, you know, at that point, we're sitting 18 months from the project kickoff to being under construction. So that was a very aggressive schedule. Couldn't have done it without all of the partners, including Cole County, City Jefferson, JC Reb Capital, CNPS, and then all the funding partners. So we wanted to give you a little bit of a update on where the construction is and a little bit of a time lapse photograph. This was a couple of months after construction started. If you can visualize being over North Shamrock Road looking to the east, this was the location of the former Algoa Quarry. Scholastic is over on the left-hand side of the page. And then, kind of in the upper distance, is Morse Packaging and Alpla. So you can see some of the grading work being done along Sturts Road and just getting into the quarry, starting to kind of break through that quarry wall, coming into where the CART facility will be. The CART will be located on the right-hand side of that photo. And then Capital's oil terminal will be located on the left side. This is jumping ahead a couple of months to September. Again, continuing grading, most of the, at this point, most of the grading on the rail extension was completed. And they've started moving into the quarry area. And then Capital has started working on their facility towards the left-hand side of the page. And then this was taken last week. All the grading work is completed. The rail has been laid from behind Alpla all the way up to getting ready to come into the quarry. So you can see there where the three tracks that'll consist, that'll comprise the CART facility, where they're gonna be coming into the quarry. So all the grading work has been done, and they're currently working on laying out the rest of the tracks. And we've got a couple of ground level photos. So the one on the left is directly behind Alpla, where the track extension comes off of the existing rail spur. So they've got the track laid and some of the ballast put down. Then on the left, on the right-hand side, is the first switch going into the CART facility. So they've got the ties and the rail and the switch placed. And then they'll come through and add the ballast and bring everything up to grade from there. So as we're sitting today, we're right at two years from the initial project concepts to being almost done with construction. The contract is to be, have construction complete by the end of December. Looks like they may be actually a little bit ahead of schedule on that. So construction-wise, everything's going really well.
As Paul said, it's really right at just under two years that we had the first meeting. And this meeting was, we need to do this or try to figure out how to do this, but there's no money. So from that point, fast forward about, maybe I'm not even a month, a couple of weeks, we brought MIMO RPC or the Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission in. They knew of some grants available. So from that, that began the process to start searching out some money. We knew we'd wanna do this project, but we just didn't have the full funding to do it. So through that, MIMO RPC helping tremendously to find some of these grants. So we got a little over $1.5 million from EDA, $880 from MoDOT Freight Enhancement. And then, you know, a couple of months ago, we were number five USDA. We got $200,000 from them. So project cost to date, now, there has been some change orders. We've had some additional rock to have to deal with. Rock can be a little tricky trying to estimate during the design phase. We did an electrical isolation, and that was determined. The rail contractor suggested that we do it now. It'd be cheaper to do it now than later. Initially, we didn't think we would need it, but they said it'd be better just to get it done now. So we did that. And then there was a sewer relocation we had to do. Those are the primary reasons for the change orders. The fact that we're really close to completion, we don't really see any additional. And there might be some underruns, overruns that'll fluctuate the final cost. But we're just a touch under $4.6 million. A project of that magnitude with a local investment of less than $2 million is a pretty good value, a pretty good return. So 44% local, and the rest coming from other sources. And we've talked to the commission at length about the operator. The goal here with this project ultimately would be an operator to operate everything, bring it under that umbrella. And kind of, the county's still the owner of the facility and the spur, but we don't wanna be the ones operating it. Allow a private, private company, let the private sector handle that. They're better at those types of things. So the RFQ, that was something for an operator, we had to include that in the submittal to EDA for that grant. They wanted to see that we were capable of managing this and running it after it was done. So we included that in that request for the funding from EDA. We issued the RFQ to get some perspective. Companies looking at us in January of this year, went through the process, selected the operator in March. And that was, as you know, Capital is the primary with WATCO. That's a nationwide rail operating type company as their technical advisor. So Capital Logistics is the company that we have as the operator. We signed the MOU within September. That gets us through the next few months to figure out some of the logistics and the specifics of this when it's completed. And then we will sign an actual one-year operating agreement around the 1st of January, sometime in that timeframe. Set us in place for the first year. It's gonna be a learning year for the most part. They're already, through that MOU, they're already looking at prospective customers. And that'll get into what's coming tomorrow.
So, you know, once, you know, we're getting close to the end of construction, it's time to start to implement the thing. You know, we want this to be something that's being used as soon as possible after construction is done. So with the signing of the MOU with Capital Logistics, we were able to start in on some branding and marketing. So you'll notice up in the upper right-hand corner is the logo that we put together along with Capital. We also have a website that's being constructed. It's jcjcart.org. So there'll be some information on there. During the grant process, we had reached out to some local businesses to kind of, to see what kind of support there was for the project. So we had about 12 companies that we had talked to early on. We're now re-engaging with those companies to determine what their business cases are and what their interest in the use of the facility are. We've also got a list of about 30 other businesses that we feel could be benefited by having access to rail service. So we've invited all those companies to the Coffee and Cart event that we are having tomorrow morning over at Capital Bluffs. So we'll have, we'll be there, Eric. Representatives from Capital Logistics and Union Pacific will all be there. Basically, we're inviting these companies in to learn more about what the facility is, how it works, and how they can get involved in and how they can put it to use in their businesses. The railroad logistics is a very individualized issue. You know, every company is different as far as where they're, you know, what it is they're shipping, where it's coming to or going from, timeframes and things like that. So we'll collect some information from those companies, try to put together business cases for each one of them individually, and see how, you know, utilizing the rail can compare to their current logistic patterns. So we've got a, at least one company, we've gone through that kind of in pretty good detail. And it's been very positive so far. So we're hoping that we'll be able to have somebody ready to utilize this, you know, pretty soon after the 1st of the year. But we're always gonna be looking for more businesses. To that end, I hope we've got a problem of being at capacity fairly soon. So we've already started working on the Phase 2 expansion, which would be some additional siding behind Command Web. Those preliminary plans have been submitted to UP already on a preliminary basis. So we're gonna be working towards that and looking for some more grant opportunities, probably come this spring, in order to finalize that second phase of the project.
Capital Oil, they'll be the primary user. Once they get fully up and going, they're expecting to be completed with their facility towards the end of next year. They forecasted about 300 cars a year. And so with that and that other business coming in, you know, we hope to reach capacity sooner than later. And, but we need to be prepared to move on to that next phase. And that's why we got the plan submitted to, or very preliminary plan submitted to UP, begin that process so when it's time to move to Phase 2 and we can identify some money for that, we'll be ready to go. Yeah, that's all we have.
Yeah, we were at Scholastic, what, about two and a half weeks ago? It really looks good. You can spit from there and hit Scholastic. Only thing they don't like is the dynamite. They said it kind of shakes things up, but.
Luckily, that's our word.
Yeah, yeah, but it's, it really is impressive. It really is.
It's been a good project, come a long ways from two years ago. Excited to see what it's gonna bring.
We're waiting for the ribbon cutting with Eric driving the train.
I was waiting to see the picture up there.
I always wanted to be an engineer when I was young.
Now you are one.
At least he was trying to be when he grew up.
Quick question, is there a reason you're a .org versus a .biz or .com? Org sounds like a not-for-profit.
I don't really know if there is a reason for that. It's what was available. And we kind of went through that process of trying to find URLs that were available. We were originally just gonna go with CART, but it was taken for something already. So we added to add the JC to the front of it and went with the .org, so.
Okay.
Cool, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we have appointments by commission, and these are all basically reappointments. And I am so proud of our citizens of Cole County because they stay on our committees and they serve. And I wanna thank them in advance. But anyway, we will start at the top. Reappointment of Jason Summerer and Frank Underwood to the Cole County Traffic and Safety Committee.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Jason Summerer and Frank Underwood to the Cole County Traffic and Safety Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reappointment of Larry Bishop and James Wonderlick to the Cole County Road and Bridge Advisory Committee.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Larry Bishop and James Wonderlick to the Cole County Road and Bridge Advisory Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reappointment of Tom Piper and James Aslickson to the Cole County Parks Committee.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Tom Piper and James Aslickson to the Cole County Parks Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reappointment of Tina Miles, Daniel Renfro, and Mary Deacon to the Cole County Special Services Board.
Make a motion to reappoint Tina Miles, Daniel Renfro, and Mary Deacon to the Cole County Special Services Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And again, I just wanna thank all of these individuals for staying on our committees, because we, they do a lot of work.
Gonna double their pay this year, too, right?
I might triple it. Wait, do we have the money, Mark? Okay.
We'll see.
Okay. Any commission comments? Okay, bids and contracts. Approval and signing of COVID-19 Disaster Declaration DD 4490 Agreement.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is the conclusion of DR 4490, which is the disaster declaration during the COVID time. FEMA has closed their reporting period, and so has CIMA. And so this is the paperwork that will then close it for our county and get CIMA the ability to close out their accounts and finish out the disaster declaration paperwork. And I don't believe we've reported anything in over a year. I think the last report we had was for our testing facility that we did jointly with the city.
Okay, yeah, I'm good with it. All right, I'll make a motion to approve and sign the COVID-19 Disaster Declaration DD 4490 Agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nick. Approval of Transportation Enhancement Fund Program, TAP Agreement, with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, Rainbow Drive.
So this is for the TAP funding we were receiving, the amount of $500,000 for use to add sidewalk along Hunter's Run, along Rainbow Drive from Hunter's Run to Tarabella. This is a standard process, and the agreement with outline conditions we need to follow for receipt of the funds. The funds are from the Federal Highway Administration. This agreement is with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission. And the total cost of the project is approximately $721,000. I just need approval from you all to sign this agreement. Because it is through MoDOT, it'll be coming by DocuSign.
Okay, yeah.
So, and I did, was able to send you all a copy of the agreement last week.
And this is something we would hope for a year earlier? Is that, were we in the mix the year before on this?
Yes.
And we, we didn't make.
We put in earlier this year for this one and did not receive it then, but this latest round, we did get it.
And this is especially beneficial to students at Pioneer School?
Correct. The, where we are starting the project at Hunter's Run, that was a Safe Routes to Schools project back in 2015, 2014. It ended at Hunter's Run. Now we're just continuing this on to connect the rest of the area.
Right. It's a good project, and I'm glad that we made it to the finish line this time.
That has really grown, though, because I remember from the very start, we keep enhancing it, and it's amazing.
Those subdivisions about built out? Out there, I haven't been out there in a long time.
There's still lots of room.
There's still plenty of room, so who knows what the future brings for that area.
This sidewalk is actually, is an open field all along there. You put it on that side of the road because the houses on the other side would have given some issues with respect to the.
Well, that, and I think all the utilities are on the south side through that area, so.
Right, yeah. So there's actually gonna be a crosswalk on Rainbow.
We will have a crosswalk at the Hinwick intersection. So hopefully that will allow us to help kind of slow down the traffic in that area, not only as benefiting everybody because of the sidewalk, but also help kind of calm the traffic down through the area, which is a big complaint that we have on that side of town, so.
Right. I'll make a motion to approve the Transportation Enhancement Fund Program, TAP Agreement with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission on the Rainbow Drive project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay, maintenance renewal of our digital document management software.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
So this is just a maintenance renewal. It's an annual maintenance renewal for our electronic document management system. And we've been a little bit slow rolling this out, but the sheriff's office has definitely said that this is something they would be interested in. So, and when it comes to file sharing and things like that, and auditing and so forth and so on. So I would just ask that this be renewed for the amount of $1,620.
All right, since Brian brought it up.
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion to renew the digital document management software maintenance, right?
Yes, sir.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Brian.
Yes, sir.
Renewal, too, of Public Works uniforms, Airmark.
This is the second renewal for the uniforms for the Public Works Department with Airmark Uniform Services. They have proposed a 3% increase this year. And last year, there was no increase. Do you need a bit tab? Okay. Making the cost difference between this year and last year roughly around $237. Public Works is pleased with their services, and our recommendation is to renew 2021-27 with Airmark Uniform Services.
Motion to do the second renewal of the Public Works uniforms with Airmark.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Bid discussion and award of Clefner Ridge Pavement Replacement Project
So last Friday, November 3rd, we opened bids for Clefner Ridge pavement replacement. The engineer's estimate was $141,500. GWH Landscaping actually red low at the bid opening. After evaluating nine bids, Drinker Construction Get It LLC was a low bid of $103,470. This project will involve replacing concrete pavement on Clefner Ridge. And we will, the Public Works Department recommends awarding the base bid to the low bidder as.
Tabulated.
Tabulated, yes, thank you.
Did they just have some calculations that were done wrong on their.
They had.
And stuff, is that.
Yeah, it was calculations on their bid sheet. We have never worked with this company before, but we have reached out to a few references, and they have been highly recommended by everyone we've talked to, so.
They're from around here, right?
They're from California, Missouri. So I did reach out to a commissioner in Montauk County, who's worked with them quite a bit.
Kevin Lied reached out to somebody he knew that used to work for Lehman Construction, and the owners.
One of the owners used to be a foreman for Lehman Construction, so.
They understand this type of work very well.
Okay, so then there was an issue with one of the areas on that road. Did you all get that included in with this bid? Was that gonna be somewhere I have to look at?
We did look at it.
I'll have to go back out and relook at it. But if nothing else, I can always add it to the project and get it taken care of also.
We're not sure if it needs to be a pavement replacement or maybe some work on the gutter to make it drain better. So didn't know right offhand if we needed to just add a quantity. But that'll, it'll be, if it needs to be done with us, it will be just added as a change order.
Okay, that's what I told them, if it needed to be a change order, because I didn't know if that was in the original scope of work. So just wanna make sure while we're out there doing that stuff, that it gets.
Well, we'll take a look at it and make sure we get something done with it to address the issue at hand.
Okay.
The, let's see, we're looking at $103,000 and change?
$103,470.
And engineer was $140,000 and change?
Yes.
And their bids were as high as $190,000, maybe, or?
I was all the way up to $250,000.
Up to $250,000, yeah.
I was $103,000 to $250,000, yes, on nine bidders.
Nine bidders?
Yes.
Are you happy with coming in under engineer? You usually have a comment there.
Yeah, we got them trained pretty good. They're just prepared for the worst and hoping for the best.
I try my best for you, Jeff.
There's such a big range on that, though, it's kind of amazing, but.
The thing is, between 1 and 2, originally, there was a $1,500 difference. After tabulation, it was a $2,200 difference. So really, I mean, with 1, 2, and 3, I was within $10,000 of each other altogether, so.
I don't remember having nine bidders for anything in quite a while, so.
And the only reason number 2 didn't, or number 10 didn't bid is because he's already got a project that he's fixing to start with us in a couple of weeks, so. He didn't wanna stretch himself then on that one. But, I mean, we're getting the bids, and I think contractors are starting to get hungry because the bids are coming in very decent with us, so.
Yeah, that's good.
All right, good. I'll make a motion to award to Drinker Construction for the bid as tabulated at $103,470.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do we have any unfinished business? Okay, well, we will move on to new business. Accounts payable review. Okay. Discussion abatement of property located at 1800 Todd Court.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Okay, so first off, 800 Todd Court. So anonymous complaint was received on July 20th, 2023, which mentioned the presence of tall weeds exceeding 3 foot. An investigation was conducted on July 24th, 2023, and the results were founded in addition to the presence of solid waste and other violations. So on the violation, which you've received right now, yep, that right there. So the checked items above remain a violation as of July 25th, 2023. So that was a couple of months ago. And on that, the deadline was given as of August 30th, 2023, And on that, the deadline was given as of August thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, where solid waste, all pest harbage, and tall weeds and vegetation, and vehicle nuisances all responsibly moved, so the homeowner, your name is?
I'm not the homeowner, I'm the representative for the.
Representative, okay, so they called in and requested an extension of a month because they had health complications, COVID nineteen, so that was granted an additional thirty days, so the new deadline given was September thirtieth. So now we are in November, and the property has been cleaned up some, but it's not satisfactory. So, as of today, the remediation required are remove solid waste, remove pest harbage conditions, remove nuisance vehicles. Two items removed, which is remove tall weeds and vegetation, given the time of year it is right now, that's going to die down, so that's not a big issue, and remove public safety hazard event has also been withdrawn.
So what do we got left then?
So basically, the pictures that you guys are seeing currently, that is what we have remaining.
So when, when were these taken?
So these were actually taken yesterday.
Oh, okay.
These are present photographs.
Okay.
Senator, are you all requesting a, an extension, or?
So we're requesting that the property, that the property be, gets abated, however, we're not sure what you'd be requesting, so.
Okay.
There's a whole lot of continuing, ongoing issues that I've been having, but he didn't go into, and I, I would like to just request an extension of time, say till December eighth, that's thirty days, considering that I got this notice last night at eleven-thirty when I got home.
May I?
Yes, please.
So, as mentioned in the NOV, the NOV was actually signed for, let's go back here, on August fifth, twenty twenty-three, and the deadline was written on there, so the party knew when the deadline was, but they did call in, requested a extension, which was granted an additional month. However, they're requesting an additional thirty days, which will be fine granting, as long as you're fine with that as well.
I actually didn't call in, I went and spoke with Joe at the office.
So in thirty days, you will have all of this?
Yes, sir, I believe so. I've been working in the garage, trying to get my garage straightened up so that I can move, most of it's going back in the garage. A lot of it is from last year, when I, before I got a job. I was doing everything I could to scrap material to make any kind of money to even pay the water bill. By, by June, I think it was, I had water and electric all shut off, and wasn't able to recover until it was late in October, and then as soon as I got the power back on and turned the heat on, the blower went out on the furnace, and I've, just a month ago, I forgot to bring them up here, my county taxes, I had to catch them up last year by August so that the house didn't go on courthouse steps, and I just recently got all those all caught up, all past property taxes, to include the vehicles. The one vehicle that is still there, the, the keys have been misplaced, and so I have to get a key made for it. I don't know if you've got, ever had a, had to have a key made, it's a mundane process to try and get one made, and it's very expensive. The last estimate I had was three hundred, but I think I found somewhere that does it here in town now for a hundred and a quarter.
Does the, does the vehicle have current plates on it?
No, it does not.
What, what is your relationship to the property?
My significant other is the property owner, we have two children together, we live there. She spends all of her time taking care of her mom, who has back problems and other health issues.
I'm okay with an extension, I'll work with it, continue making an effort with it, are you, I mean, is December eighth going to be enough time? I mean, there's quite a bit of stuff to get cleaned up out of there, so.
Well, let me, let me ask this also, because I'm really unclear as to exactly what creates a rodent or pest harbage, because the one, the one big thing in front of the window that you see is a workbench, it's going in the garage, but it's just covered up, there's nothing underneath it, well, actually, there might be a, a dehumidifier underneath there right now. The other thing is the table in the yard, I mean, it's unsightly, but I don't see that it poses the level of a pest harbage. Yes, the weeds and grass grew up, I went through six lawn mowers trying to keep my grass mowed, my big mower, the throttle cable broke, and it's been hell trying to get a replacement.
So you're saying you can have this done by December eighth?
I believe so.
And if it's not?
Then I think we would probably have paid it. This, this has been going on since August, so I, I don't have any problem with giving you another month, but I think that's kind of the drop dead.
But I think back to his question that didn't answer was, what makes it rat harbage or vermin harbage and stuff, so I think there's some stuff in there that we need to probably focus on if we get that stuff taken care of. That's probably the biggest thing is, the solid waste storage on the, this front would probably be part of the biggest thing.
Right, what solid waste?
So.
So I believe you have a copy right here as well, so you can take a look at the photographs. Okay.
And basically, it's, it's the accumulation of, you know, a lot of different materials and stuff that are, that are, you know, laid on top of each other in a way that rats, mice, poaches, things like that, you know, it creates a pest harbage, and, and so that's kind of, you know, so one point six rat harbages, it shall be unlawful to keep, maintain or store upon real property refus in a manner or condition which is conducive to rat infestation or breeding, any such violation shall constitute public health nuisance, and so there's, there's that, you know, verminage.
Sure, but I, I see a definition of refuse as trash, and I understand that I don't have bags of trash laying out here.
Yeah, and, you know, so one person's trash is another person's treasure, and, and there's a lot of stuff that is stored out there in a haphazard way that, you know, from a standpoint that could allow for breeding of different vermin, and that therefore could create a situation where, you know, it could impact others.
Okay.
I think there's part of it too, is that, you know, some of the stuff that, if we get some high winds and stuff, it goes from your yard to somebody else's, we can't just tell you, you got to clean it up because it's an eyesore, that's not, there's nothing in the statute that allows us to do that, otherwise we'd be up here probably five days a week dealing with people around the county.
County would be operating as an HOA.
So, I think just trying to get the stuff that, the big stuff that we need to take care of would be the.
Yeah, just, I mean, anything, if you, if you're going to be able to move stuff in the garage, anything that's, you know, inside a building, we don't, that's not our issue, so if you get a big storage shed or something to put stuff in there, your, you know, garage.
I do have a storage shed coming that's, I'm going to run right beside the driveway, eleven by seven.
Okay.
Which will cover.
You know when that's going to be here?
It was on backorder, and I don't know what's going on with that. I'm going to try and see if I can get that resolved.
It'll have outs, you know, fully closed then, yeah, that'll, I mean, that, if you get in there and in your garage, then there, we, our, our issues are gone.
Yeah, but like bicycles and grill, gas grills sitting outside is not going to be an issue, correct?
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're allowed to have gas grill stuff, I mean, it just, when there's accumulation of stuff where it gets to where it appears to be a vermin harbage, then, you know, well, you know, that's where we're.
The lady at the top of the hill has a problem with my yard, because she goes out on her deck, and that's all she can look at is straight down the hill.
Yeah, and it is, it's complaint driven, we don't drive around looking for this stuff and go after anybody, it's other people, so I think there's been progress made, I'm okay with an extension, I don't know if you want to say, you know, just the thirty days as requested.
Apparently it's just the end of the year, I don't, I don't care, I just want to clean down.
See where's that December eighth and.
Thank you.
Work with you on it, you know, we've all been through some hard times, and I understand, you know, having a little bit of forgiveness and some help along the way, so.
Yeah, by that time, I'll have two more paychecks, so.
Yep, okay, so.
I'm okay with the extension, but at the end of the extension, I, I think the time is up to have this, these issues resolved.
Okay.
That's my position on it, so I'm okay with the extension.
How about I meet with them two weeks into it and make sure that the progress is moving forward?
I, I think they'll, they've got you on their radar, so you don't have to meet with them.
We normally check in every two weeks whether they're there or not, and we do make that.
Well, yeah, we drive by and that, I mean, we, you know, as you all know, we've got other complaints and stuff in that area, different things that we've been following up on and, and, you know, trying to get resolved, we had a new one just yesterday in that area, a new one that came in over the weekend, you know, that one's not found, and so there's not, you know, was not significant, concerned enough, we talked to the people, they're in the process of re-renovating their house, and so they had a big roll-off container next to them, and anyway, you know, bottom line is, we're out there, when we're out there, we'll typically stop by and see how things are going, so.
Sure.
And we'll try to plan to make sure that you'll be home as well when we do visit.
I, I don't get off until five P M.
It might be one of those things where I stop by later on in the afternoon.
Unless you stop by at seven, seven in the morning.
That works too.
Okay, sounds like we got a plan, I guess we probably need a motion then to do the extension. I'll make a motion to give an extension until December eighth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, I will.
Okay, discussion, discuss abatement of property located sixteen ten Starlight Drive.
Okay, so this one has been going on for quite some time, and it needs to come to an end. So anonymous complaint was received on June fifteenth of twenty twenty-two, which mentioned the presence of junk being all around the yard, an investigation was conducted on the same day, and the results were founded. Progress was recorded over the course of a year, however, new items will be brought in shortly after, wished against any progress that was made. The checked items above remain a violation as of July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, and a deadline was given of August thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, to achieve compliance, remove solid waste, remove pest harbage environments, and remove nuisance vehicles. So all photographs seen currently were taken yesterday, and as of November sixth, twenty twenty-three, to achieve compliance, remove solid waste, remove pest harbage conditions, remove nuisance vehicles. Again, like the previous, remove tall weeds and vegetation was removed from this, because given the time of year, that's all going to die down, so that's not a significant issue at the moment.
So this started in June of twenty twenty-two?
Yes.
Yeah, a lot of these end up, they, they go into cycles where we talk to them, they do some initial cleanup, things are progressing in a, in a decent manner, and then, you know, and then they get a new shipment of stuff or whatever, and it gets, it gets worse, and so then we, you know, talk to them some more, and, and they get some of that straightened up, you know, this person claims that a lot of the debris and stuff that he has, he, he has like a whole bunch of metal and different things that are stacked, you know, laid strewn alongside his house, that he, you know, says he builds stuff with, he's talked about repairing different vehicles or, you know, and/or motorcycles and things like that, and so claims that since he's outside of city limits, that he, you know, he's in the county, and therefore we shouldn't have anything, I said, well, we've got, you know, ordinances, and, and, you know, if you don't get this cleaned up, we can't abate this, and I think his words were something along the line of, it'll be a bad day for somebody then if they come out here and try to take my stuff.
Is, is it, is the property owner occupied, or is it?
Yes, the property owner does occupy that address.
Yes, so the, the person that we talked to yesterday, recently married, Erica Bauer, and so I'm not sure of his last name, but, so, and I assume that they officially got their name changed, but it hasn't shown up yet on Minno G I S.
So what was his response yesterday?
What's that?
You said you spoke to him yesterday, what was his response?
What I just said, it'll be a bad day for the person that comes here to try to take my stuff away. But he did act like, he actually acted like he was looking to try to make it here today, so. Months ago, they also, you know, again, they, well, they just got married, you know, not too long ago, and so we did cut him some slack because of the wedding, tried to be, and again, it, it kind of cycles through, there was, you know, some issues that, that he had, you know, that has been resolved, but then it, it's just a cycle, it's the person, you know, they, they accumulate items and see value in a lot of things, some of the stuff that's out there is actually, you know, for, you know, kid playground type stuff, and so some of it looks, doesn't look good, but, you know, that's what some of that is, and, and so seasonal or whatever, I don't know if they're going to do something, but they're, the back of the house is really getting pretty, pretty bad also, there's a lot of accumulation of that. If you see, when I, you know, Minno G I S allows us to look at pictures, if you take a, the picture, you know, you can see the main image of the front door from, you know, years ago, twenty fourteen, I think, is when the picture was taken, and just such a pretty house, and you can just see where, and, you know, I mean, basically, this has happened in the past three years, and we've been out a few times over the past three years, so it's, that's, that's when things started going bad, and, and it's been cycled through a few times.
I'd hate to be the neighbor with their deck right there that looks out on the back side, that's.
Yeah, 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 there's a lot in accumulation.
I, I think June of twenty twenty-two, we've given them a.
A lot of time.
A lot of time.
I think it's time to abate the property.
I do too.
Yep, I mean, they're not up there asking or pleading or begging or anything, so.
Thought they would have been, yeah, you sure acted like you would, yes, we did.
I don't have a problem working with people if they come up and meet with us, but, so, yep, I think it's, I think it's round, so.
Is, is the person that you're speaking of, is he the one that signed the delivery?
Let's see here, yes.
Okay.
Was that Cole Robert?
Robinette.
Good, yep.
How do you read, you can read that? Oh, yeah, there, yeah, down below the.
Kind of writes like me.
Yeah.
I thought you were just going to say you're not.
Yeah, the printed name, like, yeah, it's.
You're at least younger than most of us.
Looks, looks like that.
Too many letters.
So it takes a affirmative action of the commission to proceed? I make the motion to abate the property located at sixteen ten Starlight Drive. It just says Missouri, but I guess it's Jefferson City, Missouri.
Yes, Jefferson City, Missouri.
All right, second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Joe, y'all need to make, Joe, y'all need to make a road trip down Lanning Creek and check out.
Oh, Rose.
No, I mean, it's a good thing.
Do you want to introduce your, your, and our, even, even our bride, even our bridegroom here?
Welcome, welcome to the family.
And then, and then, yeah, our newly married, you know, Anon Anderson.
Yeah.
I don't think he's gonna go by Mrs. Anderson, I think he's gonna stick with it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Payout of holiday time, we received an email from Toby at the Fringer Center, and so I added you to the agenda.
Thank you, good morning. I'm here to, I'm here to propose the payout of holiday time for the hours accrued by the youth specialists since our payout the end of 2022. Our office shows 392 hours on the books with a payout cost of $6,949.69. We would like to utilize funds from the part-time line, which is at 60%, we have about an access, excess of $31,000 in that line.
We've done this before, so.
I sure we did it too.
Yeah.
Our youth specialist, because of our staffing ratios, they have to work the holidays, but we are short-staffed, so they don't ever have the opportunity to take the holidays, to take holiday time.
And even if they do, we gotta find somebody to fill the spots for them, so.
And then we pay overtime.
Mm-hmm, so, yeah. Do you just need an okay on that, Debbie, or do you need us to make a motion? Okay, I'll make a motion to pay out the holiday time as presented for the youth facility.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, we breezed through that. Do we have anything else to come before us before we go into closed session?
Real quick, I want to make an announcement, the city has a public hearing on their, it's a bi-day project that's this afternoon. Little, didn't see a whole lot of information out on it, but I have all, there are like five or six different options, so I'll attend for a little bit then. Thursday, Public Works and Planning Committee meeting, there's some city-county cooperative project updates, so I'll go to that as well.
Okay. This afternoon at 4:00 PM at City Hall?
City Hall, yes.
Got it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Anything else?
I'll offer a motion pursuant to Section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri. The commission will go into closed session to discuss the following: personnel issues under 610.021 subsection 13.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Jeff?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Harry.
Yes.
Because you're special today.